Fifth column is the difference in the requested amount as to the appropriate funding. And the last column is the proposed additional funding by the committee. So allow me to just state those offices that has a budgetary request for their offices. So, under the City Mayor's office, the Internal Audit Services requested for travel expenses of 3,000 pesos, office supplies in the amount of 7,500, other supplies of 3,000 pesos, and other MOE in the amount of 9,000 pesos. These requests were granted by the committee. Next item is the Liga ng Mga Barangay. The current appropriation is 7 million pesos. The 2023 executive budget is 3 million pesos. Punong barangay and City Councilor Maria Corazon Penaflor is requesting for 5 million pesos. So there is a difference of 2 million with regards to the 2023 executive budget. So the committee appropriated additional one is additional 100,000. We recommended to grant 80,000 pesos. And for the telephone expenses, the request is 18,000 pesos. We recommend to allocate 18,000 pesos. So for the City Mayor's office, the total amount is 2,120,500 pesos. For the Sanggawanan Panglongsoon, the request for travel expenses is an additional of 610,000 pesos. The committee is recommending. The request amount is 1,450,000 pesos. The committee is recommending to grant the same amount. For the Naga City Price Coordinating Council, the budget for current chair is 270,000. Under the 2023 executive budget is 150,000. The request additional amount is 50,000. The same amount is being recommended by the committee. Under the Enable Program, Madam Chair, the committee decided to scrap this item considering that the barangay election will be held at the end of October and the new barangay officials shall take out on November 30. And therefore, these funds will not be used by the coming year. For the Office of the City Administrator, that's item number three, there was no request for additional funding. Item number four for the City Legal Office, they requested additional amount of 1,700,000 pesos for taxes, duties, and licenses for land acquisition. So the committee is recommending for the grant of 1,700,000 pesos.
On appropriations. I believe we cannot finish this in one hour. And since we are talking of 1.5 billion budget, baka ang pangutuan na madam sir, bakuhman itong dati. Everybody will agree? Yeah. Ako sa ilin ko, daytan matatapos in one hour. Baka magbilya ka, siris mangkitang niya na deliberation kan 2023 annual budget. We are talking of 1.5 billion pesos. Depiko kaya ko lang madam sir, because primero napuunpalang ang presentation kan 2023 annual budget. Igawa man ako mga hapon sigur, baka abutin man mga kulang-kulang kabangan oras. So the time is 10 to 12 in the afternoon, in the morning, in the morning. Kaya nagkuwan ako. Simprima, ang preceding officer ma- ma- pa-preparing pangutuhan. Ah, iguana.
May lunch man.
Mas pare, garuhan eh, committee and appropriations, madam sir. Sinda sponsor ka ni. Yes, yes, madam sir, biga brotao ko lang, madam sir.
Yes, ma'am, charge sa the committee on appropriation.
Okay, under item number 11.
Thank you, thank you, madam sir.
Okay, madam Chair, for purposes of faster presentation, I will only mention those offices that the committee will recommend to grant additional funding. Next item is the, under the General Services Office, the request is for insurance in the amount of 300,000. The committee is recommending for the grant of the said request. For the Public Safety Office, the requests are the following. Travel expenses in the amount of 16,000. The committee is recommending the same amount. For office supplies, 6,000 pesos, the same amount is being recommended. For police and traffic supplies, 265,000, no fund is recommended. Other general services, no fund is being recommended. For the repair and maintenance of communication network, same amount of 60,000 is being recommended. For the repair of communication and equipments, 30,000 pesos, same amount is being recommended. For the repair of motor vehicles, no additional funding. Printing and publication, 7,500. Other MOE, 50,000 pesos. Item number 14, that's F, the Naga City Dangerous Drugs Board. The request for training expenses is additional 100,000 pesos, which the committee is recommending to grant the same amount. Under other MOE, the request for 100,000 is not funded. For the People's Law Enforcement Board, Councilor Melvin Ramon Benafe requested for travel expenses of 100,000 pesos, trading expenses of 100,000 pesos, and office supplies of 10,000 pesos. 210,000 is being recommended by the committee to the Sanggawanan Panglongsoon. The City Events Protocol and Public Information Office, madam Chair did not request for additional funding on their budget, but submitted a list of activities and budgetary requirements. For the Diamond Jubilee, it's 2,500 pesos. For the Penya Pransha Festival, 12 million pesos. Kamundagan Festival, 2 million pesos. Mayoral Award, 800,000 pesos. And Sister Cities Activities, 500,000 pesos. No appropriation yet for 2023. Under the Social Services, item number 17, City Health Office, the request is for under MOE Oral Health Program Ordinance. The current year appropriation was 2 million pesos. For 2023, 400,000 pesos. So we requested an additional of 200,000 pesos, madam Chair, which the committee is recommending to grant. Under the City Health, we have the Local Health Board. The Honorable Councilor Jose Raniola is requesting to retain the same amount, the current appropriation of 425,000 against the current. The proposed budget for 2023 is 200,000 pesos. So we are recommending to grant an additional of 225,000 pesos. For the City Population and Nutrition Office, we were informed, madam Chair, that the City Mayor already entered into a MOA for the challenge initiative in the amount of 2,800 pesos. So we are recommending to grant the request of 2,800,000 pesos. Under the Housing Settlement and Development Office, the request for the Naga City Urban Development Housing Board is for the honoraria. The request amount is 54,000 pesos, so the committee is recommending the same amount. Assistance to the Naga City Urban Porfederation, the current appropriation is 849,900. The 2023 proposed budget is 600,000. So the Naga City Urban Porfederation is requesting to retain the same amount. That's why we are recommending to grant the request of additional 246,000 pesos. Under the City Social Welfare and Development Office, item number 20, the requests are the following. For the travel expenses, 25,500 pesos, which the committee is recommending for approval. Office supplies of 22,000 pesos, the same amount is recommended. Other MOE, 298,000, no funding. For the repair and maintenance of the motor vehicles, the request is 115,000 pesos. The committee is recommending to grant 80,000 pesos. For the donation, the proposed budget for 2023 is 15 million pesos. The City Social Welfare and Development Office is requesting for 18 million pesos, meaning an additional of 3 million pesos. No funding for, no additional funding. For the Sanggawadan Program, under the other MOE, the request is for an additional of 510,000 pesos. The committee is recommending for the amount of 310,000 pesos. Under item 20, that's I, Naga City Women's Home. For the food supplies, the request amount is 100,000 pesos, which the committee is recommending to grant the same amount. And also on other supplies, the request is 4,000. Same amount is being recommended by the committee to grant. Next item is for the Education Scholarship and Sports Office. The request is for other supplies, 612,500. The committee is recommending to grant 285,460 pesos. For the donation, the request is 700,000 pesos. No funding is being recommended by the committee. For the repair of the comfort rooms, the committee is recommending for the program of works for at the City Engineers Office. For the scholarships, the budget for 2023 is 20 million pesos. The request is 25 million pesos or a difference of 5 million pesos. The committee is recommending to grant additional 2 million pesos. Sports Office, under the MOE is Batang Pinoy. The request amount is 2,800 pesos. There is an appropriation for 2023 of 500,000. So a balance of 2,300. No funding for, no additional funding is being recommended by the committee. Next item, under the City Veterinary Office, under the Animal and Zoological Supplies, the request is for 270,000 pesos. The same amount is being recommended by the committee for approval. Under the Metropeso, the request is to retain positions Admin Aid 6 in the amount of 192,396 pesos. And Project Development Officer, 290,004 pesos, no additional funding. Under the Solid Waste Management Office, the request is for repair and maintenance of motor vehicles in the amount of 550,000 pesos. The same amount is being recommended by the committee to be granted. Also, just for the record, the Solid Waste Management Office is requesting for three dump trucks at 5 million each or a total of 15 million, and two mini dump trucks at 3 million each or 6 million with a total of 21 million pesos. No funding was allocated. For the City College of Naga, the requests are the following. 10 units computer for the laboratory, 3 units computer for the office, 3 units printer for the office, and 1 unit printer for the laboratory. The committee is recommending to grant 500,000 pesos. And for the request for books, the committee is recommending the same amount, 500,000 pesos. Item number 37, Our Lady of Lords Infirmary. The request is for the training expenses of 32,000, which the committee is recommending to grant the same amount of 32,000 pesos. The total additional funding being recommended by the committee is 17,713,960 pesos. Jason, Annex A, please. Madam Chair, during the budget hearing, the Honorable Hil Rosales moved that all vacant positions that cannot be filled up by next year be abolished to fund the requirements for the fuel, oil, and lubricants, and also the electricity. So may I present Annex A, the funding plan for fuel, oil, lubricant, and electricity. The assumptions are the following. The monthly power bill is 8 million. The annual requirement is 96 million pesos. Number 2, the monthly fuel, oil, and lubricant bill is 3.5 million. Annual requirement is 42 million pesos. The 2023 average fluctuations of fuel, oil, and lubricant and electricity prices will not exceed the projected cost per month. Number 4, of the vacant funded positions in the executive budget, those regulated by DOH and CHED, mandatory positions will be filled up by April 1, 2023. All other positions will be abolished to be restored when funds are available, savings to fund the deficiency for electricity and fuel, oil, and lubricants. Presented is the computation of deficiency. The fuel, oil, and lubricants monthly is 3,500,000. Annual is 42 million pesos. Allocated in the executive budget for 2023 is a total amount of 31,41,995 pesos or a deficiency of 10,958,005 pesos. This shall fund for 8 and 87 months or around 9 months of consumption. For the electricity, the monthly bill is 8 million pesos. Annual is 96 million pesos. Allocated under the executive budget is 49,882,727 pesos. So the deficiency is 46,117,273 pesos. This amount, 49,882,272, is good for around 6 and 6 months and 10 days. So we total, the current appropriation for fuel, oil, and electricity is 80,924,722,000 pesos. So there is a deficiency of 57,75,278 to fund the 12 months of fuel, oil, and lubricants and electricity requirements. So the proposal to augment fund from the salary savings for the full year PS savings from all vacant positions, we have 106 vacant positions. The total amount of savings will be 56,734,386 pesos. The Honorable Delusario requests that all mandatory and regulated positions under the Department of Health and the Commission and Higher Education Department be funded. So the following. Number 1 is the City Health Office 1, 13 personnel in the amount of 5,854,848 pesos. City Health Office 2, 13 personnel, 7,964,278 pesos. Naga City Hospital, 3 personnel, 2,9214 pesos. For the City College of Naga, 6 personnel, 4,119,854 pesos. Number 5, City Treasurers Office, Department Head is 1,631,424 pesos. Number 6 is the Accounting Department Head, 1,631,424 pesos. The City Agriculture Office Department Head, 1,631,424 pesos. The same amount for the City Engineers Office Department Head and the City Population Nutrition and Nutrition Office Department Head, same amount of 1,631,424. Number 10 is the Supervising Cooperative Development Specialist in the amount of 1,148,784 pesos. The total amount for these positions will be 29,254,098 pesos. So we deduct this from the 106 salary savings for vacant positions and the amount of 56,734,386 pesos. So we have an available fund of 27,480,288 pesos. So we add the salary savings for reversion after April 1. Considering that these positions will require posting, then qualification and interview, and then appointment of the City Mayor. So the total savings for augmentation fund for FOL and electricity will be 34,735,018 pesos. We add the appropriation under the executive budget of 80,924,722 pesos or a total available fund for fuel, oil, and lubricant and electricity Of this amount, the total fund is good for 10 months. So from January to October. For the fuel, oil, and lubricant per month is 3,500,000. For 10 months, the amount is 35 million pesos. For the electricity, for monthly is 8 million pesos. For 10 months, 80 million pesos or a total of 115,000, 115 million pesos. So we are funded until October of 2023. The remaining 2 months, we need around 56,415,538 pesos. All other budgets submitted by the executive were accepted by the committees, including the Local Development Fund in the amount of Jason, Local Development Fund. Okay, for the Local Development Fund, for the social development, the total amount is 15,300,000. The total amount is 40,350,000 pesos. For the economic development, the total amount is 123,486 pesos. The total obligations for the Local Development Fund for 2023 is 173,398,000 pesos. This is lower compared to the current year of 202,733,319.20 pesos. For the Local Disaster Risk Reduction Management Fund, the total obligation is 75,375,139 pesos from the current 82,219,513.68 centavos. Under the Special Purpose Appropriation, as submitted in the executive budget, for the barangays, barangay support fund is 13,500 pesos. Essential community services from the amount of 47,589,120 pesos or subtotal of 61,99,120 pesos. Under the mandated appropriation is the startup development program of the ITO, 1 million pesos. Digital Innovation Fund of 500,000 pesos. And the operation of the digital innovation hub of 100,000 pesos. For the Small Enterprise Workers Assistance Program, we have the City Employment Program of 5 million pesos. The City Business Stimulus Program of 3,400,000 pesos. We add the Local Development Fund of 173,398,6 pesos plus the Local Risk Reduction Management Fund of 75,375,139 pesos. The total obligations for, under the Special Purpose Appropriation, is 319,862,267 pesos. For the summary of long-term obligation and indebtedness for 2023, we have with the Land Bank of the Philippines to finance completion of the Naga City Coliseum. The principal amount is 117, 117,902,000 pesos. The amount due for 2023 is 10,236,671.56 centavos. The remaining balance for this year will be 16,264,920.8 centavos. Under the Development Bank of the Philippines is to finance equity counterpart for waste-to-energy project of the Naga City Government. The principal amount is 15,345,872.70 centavos. The amount due for this year is 868,395.49 centavos. After this payment for this year, there will be no longer any balance. Under the Development Bank of the Philippines, the construction of the Naga City Science High School, Balatas Road, New Naga City Hospital, various drainage and road projects, Pakul and San Isidro satellite markets, and lot acquisition for socialized housing, the principal amount is 700,000 pesos. The amount due for this year is 118,484,572,000 pesos. Out of this amount, we have still a balance of 565,427,250 centavos and 250 pesos and 17 centavos. So for the long-term obligation and indebtedness, the total amount is 129,589,638.5 centavos. Under the Statement of Statutory and Contractual Obligations for 2023, number 1, the statutory and contractual obligations for life and retirement premium in the amount of 46,881,926 pesos. For the Well-Health Contributions, 8,788,257 pesos. ECC Contributions, 1,831,200 pesos. Pag-ibig Contributions, 1,831,800 pesos. Vacation and sick leave and other personal benefits, 23,525,165,000 pesos. For the Terminal Leave Benefits, this one was allocated in their respective offices. Retirement Graduity in the amount of 1,300,000 pesos. Sa Power and Illumination, earlier in the executive budget of 49,882,727. Water Bill, 5,905,200 pesos. For the Debt Service, we have 129,589,639.5 centavos. Subtotal for the statutory and contractual obligation is 281,974,46.5 centavos. As earlier mentioned, the 5% for the Local Disaster Risk Reduction Management Fund is 75,375,139 pesos. Aid to 27 barangays is 61,89,120 pesos. For the 20% Local Development Fund, 173,398,8 centavos. The total statutory and contractual obligations is 591,836,313.5 centavos. So may I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair? On joint and collective motion of the members of the committee on appropriations, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggung Palungsod to pass an ordinance approving the 2023 annual budget of the City of Naga in the amount of 1,511,570,780 pesos subject to the following inclusions and adjustments. Number 1 is to adopt the previous recommendation of the Honorable Hil Rosales, which was seconded by Honorable Gomez, Honorable Benape, NCPC Chair, Representative Mr. Elmer Santo Domingo and Punong Barangay Doris Lee of the Liga Namang Barangay, to abolish in the 2023 annual budget of the City of Naga all vacant positions in all offices and departments of the City Government of Naga that is not vital and essentials except regulated positions under the Health Services and the Education. Under this, the Honorable Del Rosario manifested his opposition to the motion made by the Honorable Rosales. So the committee is moving to adopt the recommendation and the motion by the Honorable Rosales.
The Local Government Code mandated position for local government units to create in the fallow. We cannot just abolish those positions because abolition of those positions tantamount to amendment of the provisions of the Local Government Code. So we cannot remove in appropriation from those mandated positions. Second, Madam Chair? Yes? Second, Madam Chair. What are those positions proposed to be abolished? We should know. Because there are department who requested the Sangguni Ampalungso through the mayor that we create certain positions in their office because it is vital to their operation. We cannot just abolish those positions by removing the appropriation. Because in the first place, removing or, yeah, removing appropriation for those positions is tantamount to abolition of position. So that pertains to abolition of positions, Madam Chair. So we want to know, what are those positions proposed to be abolished?
No.
Pagdaita binugtakan budget, Madam Chair, that tantamount to abolition of the position.
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair? Okay. The committee arrived at this decision when the Honorable Benape asked our budget officer, kung noarin mapipilapan kung noarin mapipilapan si mga vacant positions. And the reply of our budget officer is actually no plans of filling up because those positions are part of the salary savings. So that's why the Honorable Rosales moved that those positions that will not be filled up by next year except those regulated positions by the Department of Health and the Commission on Higher Education. And also the positions of the department heads and the revenue collecting officers. Those were included. Mandatory.
Supervising Cooperative Development Specialist, number 10. Yes. Yeah, that precisely the reason, Madam Chair, why I am asking for the list of those positions proposed to be abolished. Because remember, Madam Chair, that it's difficult to create position. Abolition of position is so easy, but it's too difficult to create position. There are certain... Yes, Madam Chair, there are certain positions which is really necessary in the operation of the City Government of Naga. Baka nga niyan ang sarungrazon kaya si mga function sa dapat magibo, may deliver kang gubian lokal ka Naga, dahil na deliver, dahil biga, papan, dahil biga pipilapan si position. One example, itong records officer sa General Services Office who should take care of the titleing of all properties owned by the City Government of Naga. Pirentauna, dahil pa na, dahil na gigiwan trabaho niyan. There are so many properties of the City Government of Naga which remain untitled up to now. So tapos, dahil bumubuktakan 'yung pundok, what kind of budgeting is that? I'm not cheat, finish, Madam Chair. Napun palang.